Chair Fredrickson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cox. Commissioner McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Here.
Commissioner Shores.
Here.
Commissioner Goff.
Here.
Commissioner Keith. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Anne. All right, stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. All right, first order of business, approval of minutes. A special meeting minutes of June 23rd, 2020. Review and consideration of special meeting minutes of June 23rd, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, A?
Aye.
Aye.
I hear none, thank you. All right, item two. Consideration of public comments, those wishing to address the planning and zoning commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. A virtual meeting, public comments may be submitted to the clerk's office. In-person attendance is suspended for this meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be held through technological means. Public comments may be submitted in writing to the city's clerk office via email to cityclerk@cityofkingman.gov by placing them in the drop box at the city complex or by mailing them to 310 North 4th Street, Kingman, Arizona, 86401. Comments will be accepted up to 9:00 AM on July 14th, 2020. All comments will be shared with the planning and zoning commission and made part of the public record. Members of the public can watch or listen to the meeting live via Channel 4 or YouTube at youtube.com/cityofkingman. Do we have any comments, Anne, that we know of?
No, sir, we did not.
Thank you, Anne. All right, I'll close that off. Okay, item number three, reports. Item A, past council action, past council action. Planning staff will report to the planning and zoning, planning and zoning commission on city council actions on July 7th, 2020 regarding items described below. Gary.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Rezoning case RZ 20-002 for the Kingman Crossing Boulevard rezon expansion was passed with conditions. The next item, minor general plan amendment case GP 20-001 and case number rezon RZ 20-004. Both permits were addressing the same land and they were both approved. And these, all these cases were approved per your recommendations, however. One case that might interest you is, is the rezon of the Santa Fe Parkway. The issue was the Villa, Vista, Vista Bella neighborhood and the rezon or the open space element that was to the east. The commission recommended that the 60-foot wide easement for the drainage sufficed with a 150-foot R110 zone buffer. However, when it went to council, some meeting had been, had occurred between the applicant and the neighborhood and a different solution was found, and I'll show that to you here. Second here. And. Okay, on the screen, hopefully you can all see this. It was the, the outcome of this particular section of the Rancho Santa Fe rezon. The solution was to continue with the R110 buffer at approximately 120 feet. I'm sorry, 130 feet of a buffer rather than 150. And to take place of that missing 20 feet, the property owner agreed to dedicate a parcel that is 20 feet wide along the wash there for the use of a, specifically a trail for the, not only the Vista Bella neighborhood, but also adjacent properties as well will be able to enjoy that. So that was a, a change that or modification made between planning and zoning and the council. But the important part is that it was passed and the commission's report was presented to the council.
Everybody back on?
Yeah, I think that's it for me.
All right. Item B, the 2020 Arizona Planning Association Conference. Planning staff will provide, provide a report to the planning and zoning commission regarding the status of the 2020 Arizona Planning Association Conference.
Chair, the Arizona Planning Association Conference is going to be held, likely to be held via teleconferencing. And so there won't be an in-person conference, that's our understanding thus far. And there may be opportunities for more participation on the commission's part if we, if the budget allows. Versus in the past, we're going to attend the conference costs much more. So this might be a good opportunity and we'll explore that and report back to the commission when we find out more.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, new business, item four. For the benefit of Jeb Noble and conflict of interest, we're going to jump to item C so he can participate in this one. Item A and B, Jeb notified me that he has a conflict of interest, so he will be excusing himself on those two. Item C, rezoning case RZ 20-0005. A request from Kingman Land Holding applicant and property owner. Contact Travon Pennington to resume two contiguous parcels of land from R18, I8 residential, single-family, 8,000 square foot lot minimum, and RR rural residential to R16 residential, single-family, 6,000 square foot lot minimum. The parcels are adjacent to Eagleview subdivision, northeast of Grace Neal Parkway.
Thank you, Chair.
Very.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. One of three cases to be heard tonight. The first one, as the chair mentioned, is rezoned case RZ 20-005. The chair mentioned, this is a request to go from rural residential and single-family R18 zone to a residential, single-family zone of R16. The property owner is Kingman Land Holding and the applicant is Travon Pennington. You can all see this, I've presented a vicinity map so you can see where the project property is located. It's on the northern part of the city. If you're familiar with East Grace Neal Parkway and future parts of East Grace Neil Parkway. The property is located actually north of that and the northern boundary, of course, first the subject property is in the red outlined area and where the star is. The northern part of this property is actually the northern, one of the northern boundaries of the city limits. And to the east, I'm sorry, to the west, you can see Stockton Hill Road traveling north and south and Eastview Road traveling north and south directly below the property. And I may be jumping ahead, but again, the property is outlined in red. To the south of that is the existing Eagleview subdivision that's being developed. The current zoning, as I mentioned, the RR and the R16, I'm sorry, R18 zones are in the red boundaries. The upper left area is zoned RR rural residential and the remainder of the parcel in red is zoned R18. And again, their request is to go from those two zones to R16. aerial photo and utility map, this just shows again the boundaries of the subject property as well as the green lines and you can't really see them, but there's water and sewer lines shown on this map. We'll talk more about the service capacity in a moment. The general plan 2030 land use map shows the property against starred and boundaries in red. Shows the property designated as medium density residential, that's three to eight units, dwelling units per acre. And that is similar to the properties around it in the same color. And you can see to the north and west is low density residential, one to two dwelling units per acre. And to the west, you can see, I've pointed out a, a small portion of community commercial designation. To the south is the public quasi-public designation. Mojave Community College is located there. A site photo showing just a view from the property to the east. Our sign posting there and more view. The combined, there's two parcels involved, involved. And combined, they make up about 74.6 acres with parcel one being 57 and parcel two being 17.6 acres. Now, the zoning is approximately 56 acres of the subject property is zoned R18 currently. And approximately 18.2 acres are zoned rural residential. And both properties are currently undeveloped. The general plan again designates the area as, or the subject property and areas to the south and east as medium density residential. The property was annexed in 2002, it was subsequently zoned rural residential. Rezoning occurred in 2005, portions were rezoned to R18. The RR portion remained and was not part of the application for the rezon. And at this, simultaneously that rezon included a preliminary plat for the Eagleview subdivision. And the property that, the subject property was originally Phase C and D of the Eagleview preliminary plat in 2005, but that has since, that portion of the preliminary plat has expired. And will, any future subdivisions will need to go through the process again. The property again remains undeveloped. Physical characteristics, the property gradually slopes to the southeast. Property does lie within the flood zone X shaded on the firm, the flood insurance right now. Public utilities, the sanitary sewer, according to the, this information is according, according to the city engineer. Sanitary sewer is at or near capacity in the area downstream. And improvements to the downstream infrastructure may be necessary for development, not for necessarily rezoning. The water served, is served by one feed and that'll, any future water to the site will need approval from the municipal utilities commission. The western portion may be problematic and that's due to elevation. It is higher than our water tank and that is the area that's currently zoned RR rural residential. The engineer mentioned that additional looping of the water system may be necessary. Transportation, the site is accessed from Grace Neal Boulevard or Parkway and Eastview Road. Grace Neal Parkway runs east-west, Eastview runs north-south. The Grace Neil Parkway, I mislabeled it as Boulevard, has 100 feet of right-of-way with some areas improved, approximately 59 feet. The Eastview Road, approximately 65 feet of right-of-way and about 55 feet are improved at this time. Our property notification did include postings on the property. Publishing in the Kingman Daily Minor and surrounding property owners within 300 feet were sent notice as well. To, to date, no public comment has been received regarding the proposed rezoning. And regarding department and agency comments, no objections were received. However, Unisource Energy and the City Engineering Department have provided comments that will need to be considered as part of any development of the property. Unisource mentioned they, they will require a five, or need a five-foot easement just outside the platted roads along all lots. The city engineering mentioned that they will require that the municipal utilities commission will need to approve any service, water service. And they will need, the development will need to demonstrate adequate water supply. And as mentioned, additional looping may be necessary of, of water. Sanitary sewer, sewer, the downstream sewer is at or near capacity. So the applicants during development will need to demonstrate sufficient capacity. And as mentioned, downstream improvements to the sanitary sewer may be necessary. For city streets, the streets that are proposed in any future development must meet current standards, including perimeter streets. Secondary access will be required by the subdivision ordinance. Currently, the Eagleview subdivision is accessed only through the East Grace Neil Parkway, Eastview intersection. A traffic analysis, impact analysis will be required as part of any development there. And drainage will, the site will need to accommodate all off-site drainage entering the site per our current drainage regulations. Part of the analysis or the, part of rezoning must be considered as a demonstrated need for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. In the R1 district, and this should be R16, I apologize, zoning district will accommodate continued population growth in the city. And looking at the US Census data in preparation for the meeting from 2010 to 2019, the city has grown by approximately 2,900 residents, a 10.5% increase. Which I didn't put on here, but that'll necessitate obviously more housing and, and a variety of housing. Another consideration is the suitability of the proposed zoning district and compatibility with the surrounding area and community. The area is generally vacant land and residential, but does include the Mojave Community College. The R16 zone will maintain provisions that protect from overcrowdedness and this includes height limits, setbacks and lot coverage. Residential density limits for R16 is just under eight dwelling units per acre. A zoning of the, of R16 is the same as property currently zoned R16 to the east. And the applicant, this is a note that's not in the staff report, but the applicant provided us a example of how they have done subdivision elsewhere in the city. And it shows that their intent with this future subdivision would be to include a variety of lot sizes. So if you look carefully at the street and lots that I provided on this slide, you'll notice that the, the lots at least vary in, in width. And this would be to accommodate different size homes and different needs for different income levels and different preferences. Conforming, another consideration is conformance with the general plan. The, a rezoning of R16 would be in compliance with the current designation on the general plan for medium density residential. Staff recommendation is that the, based on the findings that the application generally conforms to the general plan 2030 standards for review and findings of fact contained in this report, planning staff recommends approval of a rezoning from rural residential and R18 to the R16 residential, single-family zone with the following conditions that are provided in your staff report and on this following slide. And these conditions include the municipal waters commission needing water to improve water service. Number two, the demonstrated adequate water supply. During, these are all during development or subdivision phase, not during rezon at this time. And then three, the developer will need to demonstrate sewer capacity downstream. And downstream improvements may be required or necessary. Number four, the streets proposed in a future development will need to meet current adopted standards and perimeter streets shall be constructed to current adopted standards again at the time of development. Number five, as part of the subdivision, a secondary access will be required. Number six, traffic impact study or analysis will be required as part of a subdivision or development. Seven, any development shall accommodate the off-site drainage. And number eight, at the time of subdivision, the utility easement will be required consists of five feet in width along the dedicated lots and platted roads. With that, I stand for questions, Chair.
Any commission members have any questions?
No, sir.
No.
No.
Commissioner, I have a question, or Chairman, I have a question. Two questions, the, Gary, my, what's the minimum lot size for RR?
I'll have to look that up. I've got it right here.
My biggest concern is, I guess, what the engineering says that the downstream source system may not have sufficient capacity if we are reducing the lot size from an eight to a six. We're adding flow to that existing source system.
How many did you say, Jed, you think?
So I, maybe I misinterpreted, but I was under the impression that the engineering staff said that the existing source system was near capacity.
Yeah, you're correct.
So if we're rezoning this from a R18, or I mean, yeah, an R18 to an R16, we're increasing the number of lots. And so we're further adding to the sewage flow to that existing system. I guess I'm just concerned that, you know, there's going to be sufficient capacity if there already isn't.
Go ahead, Gary.
First of all, Commissioner Noble, the minimum lot size in RR is a 40,000 square feet. The second part, if I can address it. The, I guess you'd be in a situation where improvements won't necessarily be made until development rears its head in those areas such as this second part of Eagleview subdivision. So it may be at or near capacity, but you, there won't be a solution, I guess, until a developer is proposed with having to include those or, or provide those improvements with their subdivision or development.
That could be, that could potentially mean that the city would have to replace the existing main, right? Am I, am I saying that wrong?
Chair Noble, I am not sure exactly on what would need to be replaced or what would need to be installed. That would be something that engineering would consider at the time of development. But certainly, that's a good question for now.
So I guess as Jed says, no matter what way we go, even if we say we want to downsize to R16, the city is going to determine if it's a go or not, if that will function with downsides in R16 on that many homes. So what you're saying is the city would have the final call, no matter if we approve this and council approves this?
Of course, the city engineer will have to approve their infrastructure proposal.
Does that answer your question, Jed?
Yeah, that, that helps answer it, thanks, Gary.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any questions of Gary? I see none. All right, I'm gonna open it up to the public comment. Anne, do we have any, as stated, any public comments on this?
No, sir.
All right, Anne, it's duly noted that no, no public comments and none were reported by email. So I'm going to open it up now for discussion amongst us, cap, commission members.
As a follow-up to Commissioner Noble's question, is it the trunk line? That doesn't have the capacity or is it the feeder lines?
They just said downstream capacity.
I don't know that we know that, Scott.
I, just from what was presented, Commissioner McCoy, I think it's the sewer main.
So it'd be the main trunk line then, okay, thank you.
In layman's terms. So any other, just any other discussion or comments from the commission?
I guess, so if the sewer and water do need to be improved, does the builder pay the cost of that? Or does the city pay the cost of that?
I believe the developer would be paying the cost of that, am I correct, Gary?
I can't answer for the city necessarily, but my understanding of, in past areas that I've worked for, my understanding is that the, the applicant or developer wouldn't be required to pay for their impact on the, for their infrastructure and for potential impacts downstream. As far as cost sharing, I'm not sure if the city would be involved in that, that would be a question for the city engineer.
Does that answer your question, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Charmaine, Chris, any, any comment, Terry?
I'm good. On staff recommendations, on number three, where it says developer will need to demonstrate that the sewer system has sufficient capacity for the additional density and lots being proposed. Does that mean that the city is stating that upon development that they are going to have to upgrade that sewer system and the water system?
That would, that would be our understanding that, yes, they would be, the developer would be accountable for having to upgrade.
Okay, so.
Go forward.
At their expense, right?
Pardon?
At their expense, that they would have to.
I wouldn't commit the applicant to providing, I'm sorry, this is staff again, Gary, like this. I wouldn't commit necessarily the, the city to saying that this, the applicant will be responsible for all costs to improvements downstream. But certainly, infrastructure that they're, that they would provide on their property and proportional impacts downstream, I could see that being for sure on the property itself. But downstream, I can see proportional, but that would be something the city engineer would have to confirm.
So then the developer would only be responsible up until the city limits to, to where the city would be responsible for it and then the city would have to, you know, change out the main system?
I, I would, I would look at it as if the city is in the, in the position to upgrade their infrastructure at the time. That can be looked at. If the city's not in the position, then it could hinder the, any development proposal unless the applicant's willing to provide all upgrades that are necessary. That's my, that's my take on it as staff.
Well, could we put that as a recommendation that the developer, you know, absorbs?
You can make that in a motion.
Cause everything else on staff recommendations, you know, it, it all looks good. But I would, you know, I would make a motion for number three, that the developer absorbs costs for upgrading the main sewer and water system. Cause it's kind of rule where they're going in. And that would be a hefty cost for the city. So I would like to add that to the recommendation that the developer would be responsible for sewer and water systems to be upgraded. And I'll make, and I'll make.
Your motion, Terry? Is that your motion, Terry?
Yes, that's my, yeah.
So, so your, your motion is recommend all of one through eight with, with more wording added in for item three?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I think we need clarification on the motion.
The motion is to staff recommendations. I agree one through eight with additional wording on number three that the developer assumes the expense for the sewer system and the water system on the main.
Can I just ask a question? Is that, is that ever done that they have to do the whole bill?
Well.
Go ahead. Hold on a minute, please.
Commission members, Chris Young here. So I think what we're, what we're dealing with is, is keep in mind if the, if the developer isn't even seeking a, a rezone and they submit today for their subdivision where it was R one eight versus R one six. Staff has to review that mass to go through the subdivision process for review. And at that point in time, city infrastructure is evaluated and staff comments accordingly. So theoretically, if you approve the, the zoning change, they still have to go through the subdivision process. And if there's not sewer capacity and or water capacity, additional infrastructure such as the secondary road for access which will be triggered, all of that will be evaluated at the time of the subdivision submittal. And, and, and those questions will be, will be answered whether infrastructure improvements are developer born versus city born. What is actually needed based on the subdivision submittal? But I think we're really venturing into the, the second part of this, which is the actual subdivision review and not necessarily. Does that make sense?
Yeah, can I add to that? This is staff again, Gary. That's the reason for these recommended conditions of approval. Is that these are things that the applicant will need to consider when they go to subdivide or when they go to develop. A lot of these conditions may not even be included in a rezone, but they're here to remind or be a record of the concerns of the, of staff and of the commission and council. So that's just my added info there. Thank you.
All right, does that clarify for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to make a new motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve. You know, and just as long as they're saying that I'm.
Excuse me, Chair Fredrickson?
Yes, Anne?
There's currently a motion on the floor, so you neither need to withdraw it or see if it gets a second.
Thank you. Okay, Terry, you want to withdraw or?
Um, no, I'll correct it.
You need to withdraw it and then re, and then reform it, please.
Okay, I will withdraw the motion with a motion for the approval on staff's recommendation. You know, that all infrastructures are evaluated.
Alrighty, I have a motion. I need a second.
That includes one through eight, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cox?
We're not hearing them.
Commissioner Cox?
Okay. I approve, yes.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores? Commissioner Key?
Yes.
Commissioner Goss?
Approve.
Chairperson Fredrickson?
Prove.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Anne. All right, we're going to go to item A. Minor general plan amendment case GP twenty dash zero zero, zero two. Thank you. A request from Civil Works Engineering LLC applicant and Canyon State Enterprises LLC property owner for approval of a minor amendment to the Kingman General Plan twenty thirty. The proposal is to change the current land use designation from community commercial to high density residential. Seventeen to twenty eight dwellings per acre. The subject property is located along the east side of Rutherford Street between Airway Avenue and Calumet Avenue. The site is approximately nine point five five acres and is described as a southwest corner, quarter of the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter, except for the west thirty feet. Section seven, T twenty one N, R sixteen W of the G and SRN Mojave County, Arizona.
Very. Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. The first line there, the case number is an error. I apologize for that. But this is case number GP twenty dash zero 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 two. A request to change the general plan twenty thirty land use map from a designation of community commercial to high density residential. The applicants and the applicant and owner are Civil Works Engineering and Canyon State Enterprises. The requested action's been stated, and if approved, this, this application, this will facilitate consideration of a concurrent request, which you'll hear tonight, for a rezone of the subject property. And that's proposed in RZ twenty dash zero 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 six. A vicinity map here showing the subject property outlined in yellow and with a star is the area is south of Airway and north of Interstate forty, west of Andy Divine and east of Stockton Hill Road. And more specifically, the property is located between Rutherford Street and Swing Street, which form the east and west boundaries of the property. And then again, south of Airway and just north of, is it Calumet? Is that how we say it? Calumet or Calumet?
Man, I would say.
Avenue. So hopefully you all have your bearings. The subject property is, is located amongst a mix of uses. And to the north, there's warehousing and retail. To the west, northwest is ambulance service. There's also vacant land to the west and residential subdivisions and units. To the south are some, well, specifically one is a contractor's office. And then to the east, you have some commercial, an RV park. And to the southeast, you have a truck repair facility. Here's some site photos. You can see the, let's see here. They were, on this slide, the warehousing and retail. The back of that building is, is the Coca-Cola facility. And so in this picture here, you can see your direction looking east. And to the left, you can kind of see Coca-Cola on one of those trailers. Also included is, is our zoning posting image. Looking south from the property, this image looks down Rutherford Street. And you can see how later we'll mention the roads, but the subject property is unimproved. And to the south, the roads are improved with sidewalks, curb gutter, street. The current zoning, this is the current zoning map. The property is zone C three. And that's the, an intense commercial zone. To the north is C three, to the west, you have R four, which is high density residential. Our, and then to the southwest, you have R two. To the south, C three commercial. And then to the southeast, you have a portion of light industry, the I one zone. And then to the east, you have C three zoning. So there are a mix of zones in this, in this area. The twenty thirty general plan land use map has the subject property designated as community commercial and the request again is to change that to high density residential, which would be consistent with the property to the west, as you can see the lighter colored red. And then to portions of the south, again, lighter color red. An aerial photo and utility map shows that we do have, streets are located in the vicinity. We do have water and sewer in the vicinity and coincidentally, they're all eight inch water and sewer. And there are some easements on the property that provide for those lines that you can see in the subject property currently. The property is nineteen, approximately nineteen acres. I mentioned the existing zoning of C three, general plan designates as community commercial. The property was annexed in nineteen seventy one with a designation of open space or recreation open space that the general plan was amended when we adopted the twenty twenty general plan on two, in two thousand and seven. And that changed from HDR, high density residential, seventeen to twenty eight acres, dwelling is breaker to commer, community commercial. So at one point, this was designated as a high density residential. And then in two thousand and seven, December, the property was rezoned from oh, open space to C three commercial. Some of the physical characteristics are that the property is generally flat topographically. And they are located in the flood zone X shaded. And the public utilities, I mentioned access to water and sewer, transportation, frontage along Rutherford Street and Swing Street. Public notification was served in three ways. The zoning notices onsite were posted in two locations. The Kingman Daily Miner published a notice. And then also the property owners within three hundred feet were sent notice of the hearing. No comments from the public been received as of today, actually, yeah, July fourteenth. No objections were received from any departments or agencies, city engineering, the billing official and UNS electric provided comments. These comments are addressed as part of the concurrent rezoning request. So those will be addressed if, if the general plan is amended through your action tonight and through the council's action. Then these comments will be conditions on a separate rezoning application. And those include the municipal utilities commission needs to approve water service, street improvements will be required for Rutherford Street and Swing Street. Drainage will need to be addressed, new fire hydrant spacing will need to be a maximum of five hundred feet. A need for those five foot easements for the UNS electric. The analysis for changing a general plan designation, land use designation requires that there, there's some criteria. And one of them is the amendment is consistent with the policies and objectives of the rest of the general plan and the proposed amendment furthers the public health, safety and general welfare of the citizens of Kingman. And staff determined that in chapter one goals and objectives, the application complied with the land use element objective three, which is to encourage a mix of land uses or land use diversity. And this will allow more goods and services without extensive travel. He also complies with the growth element. Objective three, which is to encourage a planned mixture of land uses that provide a choice of transportation modes and reduces automobile dependency and provides the, well, these aren't as, as significant, but open space and creates a sense of place. Policy three point one provides a mix, this would provide a mixture of housing types, densities, prices, rents and designs provided throughout the neighborhood planning areas and higher density areas near improved collector streets and close to commercial and public service areas. It's also complies with chapter four. The land use element for residential land uses. That states the density of housing is always a fundamental decision in, in city design. Public costs of services and private development costs that are transferred to the end user are closely linked to residential densities. Density provides a benchmark from which the amount and type of public surfaces, services that must be furnished can be measured. Amending the land use map, not just amending the general plan, but specifically amending the land use map specifies if the amendment is to change the land use map or an additional finding must be made that the proposed change will be compatible with other land uses existing or planned in the vicinity. Provided one through four there, that higher density residential development along collector streets, this would provide. Number two, provide, this would provide a mix of land uses, which allows the accessibility to nearby commercial and public services without extensive travel. Three, immediate adjacent, immediately adjacent to the other areas, are, are other areas designated as high density residential to the south and west. So that speaks to compatibility. And then all finally, immediately adjacent to the property is Rutherford Village and, which is a developed subdivision with similar sized lots that I'll, I'll specify those lots in a minute. And they're developed with duplex, triplexes and fourplexes. I'm sorry, that, that analysis is in, in the separate rezoning. Staff recommends for the land use change to the map that the application conforms to the standards for review and findings of fact. And that the application is consistent with the policies and objectives. The rest of the general, general, Kingman General Plan twenty thirty and its adoption will further the public health, safety and general welfare of the citizens of Kingman. And that the proposed change will be compatible with the other land uses existing or planned in the vicinity. Planning staff recommends this approval. Planning staff recommends this approval to change the current 2030 general plan use, general plan land use designation on the subject property located on Rutherford Street from community commercial to high density residential, which would yield seventeen to twenty-eight dwelling units per acre. And with that, I stand for questions.
Anybody have any questions, Gary?
No. No.
I see. I see no questions. Right, I'm going to open it up to the public. And as of this moment, do we have any further comments?
We do not, sir.
Thank you, Ann. I'll close this off for the general public. All right, open it up to discussion amongst those commission members.
I have no questions.
All right, can I make it a motion?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, in this part of the meeting, are we asking questions? This is just to rezone, a rezone, correct? That's right, is that what this, you have to forgive me?
General plan.
The, I changed to general plan, okay. So that's all this is right now.
This is a general plan amendment.
General plan amendment, okay. Okay, that's what I, that was the question I had, nothing at this time.
Thank you, Keith. All right, I can get a motion?
I'll make, I'll give you a motion to approve for the general plan.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further questions? All right, call the roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cox? Commissioner Cox?
Approved.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Shores? Commissioner Keith?
Approved.
Commissioner Goss?
Approved.
Chairperson Frederickson?
Approved.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, item B, rezoning case RZ 20-0006. A request from Civil Works Engineering LLC, applicant in Canyon State Enterprises LLC, property owner for approval of rezoning from C3 Commercial Services Business to R4 Residential Multi-Family High Density. The subject property is located along the east side of Rutherford Street between Airway Avenue and Calumet Avenue. The site is approximately nine point five five acres. And it described as a southwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of the northeast one quarter, except for the west thirty feet. Section seven, T21N, R16W of the GNSRM, Mojave County, Arizona. All right, Gary?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Before you is the companion case of the general plan land use hearing that you just had. This is case RZ 20-0006. And the request is go from a C3 Commercial Service Business zoning district to the R4, R-4 Residential Multi-Family High Density Zone. Excuse me. The applicant is the Civil Works Engineering and the property owner is Canyon State Enterprises. And I mentioned the request and that this is a companion case. The vicinity map shown before you is the same location as the previous hearing, located south of Airway and north of Interstate 40 and positioned between Rutherford Street and Swing Street. Surrounding land uses, we went over this in a previous case. Warehousing and retail to the north, vacant land and ambulance services and residential to the west. To the south, contractor's office and vacant land. Southeast is a truck repair. And to the east is some commercial and an RV park. Excuse me. Site photo again, looking to the east. And our zoning post, our posted zoning sign. Looking south on Rutherford Street. Again, the portion that the subject property is at is not improved at this time. Property to the south includes improvements. Zoning map, current zoning again is C3. The requested zoning, so from commercial to R4, the high density residential zone. And you can see that generally, the area is, contains C3 zoning, with the exception of the I-1 in light and industry zoning to the southeast. And to the west is a similar or an identical zone of what's being requested, and that's R4. And then to the southwest is R2 zoning residential medium density. The general plan map, you can look at this in two ways. One is because this, this application falls in time after the land use map was considered in the previous case. And you recommended approval. So technically, what we'd be looking at is the requested from community commercial to high density residential. You can consider that having been taken place for purposes of considering compatibility and, and other issues in this, in the staff report and in the criteria. So the tentatively approved designation would be similar to the high density residential to the west and high density residential to the south, the lighter color red. Again, the subject property is outlined in yellow. As mentioned in the previous case, we've got eight inch water and sewer lines on the perimeter of the property with some water and sewer line infrastructure on the property with an easement assigned to the property and to the benefit of the property to the north. Property is nineteen acres. C3 zoning. The general plan again is technically or tentatively high density residential. The zoning history, we've gone over that. It was rezoned to C3 in 2007. The physical characteristics are, the property is generally flat. And they are located in the flood zone X shaded area. And public utilities are provided access to water and sewer and transportation. They do have frontage along Rutherford Street and Swing Street, which both have sixty feet of right of way. We did notice two signs on the property. We did publish notice in the Kingman Daily Miner. And we did serve notice to the property owners within three hundred feet of the property, subject property. And as of date, no public comment has been received. No objections were received from any department or agency. However, city engineering and the building official and UNS electric provided comments. I'll go over these, again, the municipal engineering, from the engineering department, we have the municipal utilities commission will need to approve water service. The street improvements will be required on Rutherford Street and Swing Street. Rutherford Street needs improvements along full, across full frontage of the parcel. Swing Street needs improvements that will extend to the nearest paved roadway. And new driveways shall be located for the street and sidewalk development rules and regulations. Agency comments continued with engineering regarding drainage. The development shall accommodate all the offsite drainage entering the site. The development shall provide retention and detention for increased impervious areas that come as part of development. And per the Kingman Area Drainage Master Plan, I'm sorry, these will need to be done per the Kingman Area Master Drainage Plan Design and Administrative Manual. The building official and community development manager provided a note that the new fire hydrant spacing will need to be a maximum of five hundred feet. And UNS provided a statement regarding the five foot easement. They will need long platted roads on all lots. Analysis for this, for rezoning, there must be a demonstrated need for the uses permitted in the zoning district. And I mentioned this in a previous case that, but I've provided a little more detail here. From 2010 to 2019, the population of city of Kingman has grown based on the US Census 2010 and the July 2019 estimate. According to those, we've grown from twenty-eight thousand to thirty-one thousand in population. The growth rate represents ten point five percent or approximately one point one six annually. And this equates to approximately twenty-nine hundred new residents to the city of Kingman. Such growth creates a demand for approximately one hundred or one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dwelling units in the city. And that would be based on the US Census estimate of two point five two individuals per household. And currently, only nineteen point oh four acres of land in the city is currently zoned R4. So there is a, is a deficiency in the R4 zoning throughout the city. And again, this is the highest density residential zone up to twenty-eight dwelling units per acre. Housing stock for the city of Kingman will need diversity, not solely single family residential on larger lots. The R4 zone allows that variety and versus these generally larger lot, single family residences. Another criteria is suitability of the proposed district is compatible with the surrounding area and community. A change in zoning would allow smaller lot sizes. And this, under C3, the general commercial, they could potentially develop residential units. But minimum lot sizes would be seventy-five hundred versus if they're allowed R4 zoning, minimum lot size is only six thousand square feet. So that is a big trigger for the reason why the applicant has chosen to request R4. The R4 zoning allows the twenty-eight units per acre up to. And the applicant has provided, I've provided on the next slide, a conceptual future subdivision plan. And that would provide, then again, this is just concept. And that could provide up to forty-eight lots between six thousand square feet and seventy-five hundred square feet. And according to this concept subdivision plan, up to thirty-two lots would be seventy-five hundred square feet. And that would be up to one hundred and ninety-two dwelling units. Not lots, but dwelling units on the entire property for, or that would approximately be twenty dwelling units per acre, less than the allowed twenty-eight dwelling units per acre in the R4 zone. There are several nearby apartment complexes that are approximately twenty dwelling units per acre or higher. This would include the Centennial Park Apartments and Park Crest Village. And then also the Rutherford Village to the southwest has a mix of duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. And conformance to the general plan, the proposed zoning of R4 is in compliance or conformance with the land use designation, as I mentioned, tentatively the high density residential at seventeen to twenty-eight dwelling units breaker. This next slide shows the concept, conceptual subdivision. I don't have the subject property outlined in yellow, but you can see the wider area, white in color. It has a street on the southern end of that and a street that connects to Rutherford Street. And then an internal street to the north within that subdivision that would connect to Swing Street. So they're showing connectivity and a varied amount of lot sizes in subdivision. And that would not be different from the subdivision to the southwest, as you can see on Armor, Fox, those streets. Got over the dwelling units breaker. Staff recommendation is based on the findings that the application generally conforms to the general Kingman, Kingman General Plan 2030 as amended under case number GP 20-0002. Standards for review and findings of fact contained in this report. Planning staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning from C3 Commercial Service Business to R4 Residential Multi-Family High Density with the following conditions to be addressed at the time of development. Number one, water service requests would need to be submitted to the municipal water utility commission for review and be authorized by the city council. Number two, all perimeter streets and new driveways shall be constructed to the current adopted standards at the time of development. And number three, the proposed development shall accommodate all offsite drainage entering the site and provide retention or detention for the increase in impervious area in accordance with the Kingman Area Master Drainage Plan Design and Administrative Manual. And with that, I stand for questions, Chair.
All right, any questions, Gary?
None for me.
None.
Did you say you had a question, Scott?
No.
All right. All right, I see none. I want to open it up to the public at this time, Ann. Do we have any comments or anything?
We do not, sir.
Thank you, Ann. I'll close it to the, to the public. All right, I'll open it up to discussion amongst us commission members.
I really have no comments, other than I'm glad to see that somebody is actually going to develop this part of town.
I kind of tend to agree with you there. I think it's probably well deserving. And as stated in the proposal, it is close to commercial for the people, if they wanted to walk and so forth, so. I get a, get a motion for approval?
Um, this is, can you hear me? This is Charmaine, I have my hand raised. Okay, yeah, I'm not, I think I did have a question. Has anything been addressed, is this the time where we address the safety for the children? Because I think it's a fabulous place and I've always looked at that area and why hadn't somebody developed that earlier. But we do have three schools there and a public pool and a park. And I was wondering if we pass this, or not pass, but if we did a recommendation for approval, which I think is great, where, do we address that public sa, child safety, public safety should be strongly considered here because we have three schools? Like I said, a park, a huge park, library. And with the, this current owner owning the adjacent property that connects to Willow, that more than likely that that's going to be again, more residential, which is great. But we're going to have streets going through there. We got no, we got no crosswalks there that I'm aware of now. So kids just jam across the street with their skateboards with everything and, and they're, you know, it, the traffic's going to be busier. So where do we address the child, children's safety with, with all of that?
Chair, I would just mention that the, the only thing I'm aware of currently would just be that the city engineer stated that the improvements will need to be curb gutter sidewalk, street improvements. So the sidewalk would provide that safe route to school. As far as crossings, I'm not aware of any that are being proposed at the time. So yeah, with, with street improvements, including sidewalks, that provides that multi-use travel.
I think you can, can kind of understand, I mean, with all of these homes and fourplexes and stuff, that, that's something that probably needs to be addressed. You know, I'm just saying, because it is kind of crazy over there right now. The kids just zoom across these streets without even looking. And so my, like I said, my concern is that's a busy park and there's three schools that are, the academies are all there. That's my only concern, I would say, would be the, the safety. That's my only concern, I would say, would be the, the safety measures to take into consideration.
Can the concern be addressed in a motion, just as it gets passed on to council, to, to please? Along with your recommendation, we can add that, just a concern to maybe address this issue?
I have a, hey, I think you would need to address that with the Traffic Safety Commission. And ask for their input.
That's a good point, Scott.
Yeah, Chair, that could be certainly part of your motion is to have the applicant work with the, as, as appropriate, work with the Traffic Safety Commission.
That's a good. Would that, would that address your concerns there, Charmaine?
Yeah, I, yes, absolutely. I think it would be wonderful.
Hey, would anybody like to make a motion with, with those concerns or make a motion as recommended?
I'll make a motion to approve with the addition that they consult Traffic Safety Commission and any recommendations from the staff.
I'll second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussions? I hear none. All right, roll call vote, please, Ann.
Commissioner Cox?
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Shores?
Approve.
Commissioner Keith?
She said approve, but I don't think we heard her, she's muted.
Approve.
Commissioner Goss?
Approve.
Chairperson Frederickson?
Approve.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. All right, item number five, announcements by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars. Request for agenda items for future meetings on request or reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Anybody have any comments or announcements?
No.
The, the only comment I have is five o'clock is pretty difficult for people that work for a living.
It's even difficult for stay-at-home moms because your husbands aren't home yet, and your kids are breaking your house.
All righty, we'll have that noted. Thank you, everybody. All right, I need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion?
No.
I hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.